Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call the Board of Supervisors Work Session Meeting for November seventh to order.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion uh to approve electronic participation for Supervisor Greenwood in accordance with Code of Virginia two point two B dash thirty seven oh eight point three. Due to being more than sixty miles from tonight's meeting location.
Exactly. I have a motion seconded for Mr. Greenwood to zoo tonight. Any discussion? Ms. Branch, can you come through?
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Hi. We have an amended, oh, excuse me, Mr. Greenwood, can you hear us? Mr. Greenwood.
Yeah, I'm good. Steve Crass. You're approved to be in the meeting. It says that he's, are you starting to wait around here? Are you? All right, he said he's not been allowed anything to be in. Oh, there we go, all right.
And Mr. Greenwood, can you hear us now?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we're getting there. Yeah, he was otherwise. They showed you as far as it appears.
Mr. Greenwood, you're a little bit pixelated, but we.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, we got you now. Can you hear us okay?
Can't touch my face, eh?
Mr. Greenwood, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you now, but.
He's got a little bandwidth.
Hey, it might be a bandwidth issue, Stephen. Why don't you just call in um to the number on that? That might be better. Okay, all right. I guess first check the waiting area and see if they have it there. There it is. How about now? Okay, we got.
We got you pretty good. How do you hear us?
That's, I can hear y'all good.
Okay. Okay, let's, from the top, you've been approved participation. We call the role Greenwood is now present. We have uh an amended agenda.
I don't think we called.
No, we have called. No, because.
Oh, voting.
On this branch.
Here. 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 Here.
Here. All right, once again. And remove item six F as in Foxtrot. Commissioner's not here this evening.
Hey, Stephen, make use of that little mute button. I'm not saying anything. I know, we're just picking up a lot of background noise. Oh, okay.
I can get a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
Second.
Second, Ms. Branch.
Hi. Hi. I wonder if you muted. There we go. All right.
Yeah. Okay, the first up on the uh agenda this evening, all points broadband update, Mr. Kyle Rosner.
We're.
What about approval of minutes?
Yes, a minutes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, on the minutes, Mr. Chair.
Those are usually.
Agenda item five, the only thing should be in there that's not on there is on. We could just page you in a second. It should have been Virginia Taxi Temp Program. It just says Taxi Temp Program. For bets.
Okay.
Should you speak Virginia on that? Thank you, that's it.
Mr. Chair, I'll give approval of the minutes with that correction.
Second, Ms. Branch.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, okay, now, all points broadband update, Mr. Rosner from all points broadband.
Yes, sir, can y'all hear me?
I'm clear, yeah.
Great. And can you see my screen here?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Well, uh, Mr. Chair, the rest of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity to come speak. Um, sorry I couldn't be there in person. I want to give a uh brief update on where the broadband project stands, answer any questions y'all might have, um, and update you on some exciting uh initiatives that have been going on as it pertains to the project. So first, let me just walk you through the timeline, kind of where we've been and uh where we're headed. Uh, the All Points King William Broadband Partnership commenced a little over two years ago. Uh, the first really important thing that happened is All Points secured federal funding through a program called ARDOF. Um, and that happened in February of twenty twenty one. And then All Points Dominion uh and the Monkey Indian Tribe entered into agreement to expand the in- the initiative, the original initiative, to include the tribal areas. Uh, in May of last year, Rappahannock Electric joined the initiative. They're a very key partner, and I'll get into their role in a bit. Um, we put together a uh All Points in in the county, along with the electric utility partners, put together a VODI application, which is the broadband grant program here in Virginia uh over the summer of last year, and then December of last year was announced, uh, the initial five point four million dollar award. Um, I say initial because when the announcement was made, that didn't mean the money came right to the county or right to All Points that day. Um, it took a long time to actually get the final contract put together, um, and that wasn't just King William, that was all over the state. So in the meantime, uh, earlier in the spring, Dominion submitted uh to the State Corporation Commission, uh, their portion of the middle mile network in King William. Uh, they have to go through a regulatory proceeding to get uh recovery for the work that they're going to do, and and so they've submitted that in May. Uh, finally, in August, the state issued the final VODI award, uh, which started the project shot clock essentially. Um, the project originally was eighteen months when it was submitted as a VODI uh project. In August, when the final award was issued, um, All Points, along with DHD, we revised that to a twelve month project period. Um, so that's great news for the county. That means that, um, you know, we shaved six months off the project. Um, and King William has moved to the very front of the line of our construction queue. Uh, more great news is last month, um, at the very end of last month, I think on Halloween Day, Dominion, um, their middle mile proceeding was approved by the State Corporation Commission. Um, so we expected that, and that happened, and um, you know, that that's just another key gating item that was met. Um, and so this month, uh, we have started low level design. Um, and low level design uh is essentially taking our preliminary design and um putting it through the engineer work to make it constructable. So at the end of low level design, you can hand that off to a construction crew who can go out and get the work done. So it's extremely important. It happens behind the scenes, but we couldn't do any construction without it. Uh, it takes a long time, so it's great to have that underway now. So just a overview of the network, uh, here is the network map, and the dots in green are the unserved locations that are part of the VODI project. Um, these are two thousand two hundred and thirty-six unserved locations that are part of the project. Uh, and like I said, construction is going to be complete August of next year, uh, which is accelerated from what was initially in the VODI proposal that was submitted. Uh, so two key partners in this project are the utilities in King William County, Rappahannock Electric and Dominion. Um, they are key because they are building portions of the network, um, middle mile, as it's called. Um, so they are building key portions of the network that All Points will lease off of, and then will also build off of, um, for the last mile portion. So when we think about last mile construction, um, there's a few key dependencies that happen, you know, it just doesn't happen in a vacuum. Um, All Points just can't go out uh in King William and start hanging fiber on poles. Um, there's a few steps that need to be taken before that can happen. Um, the first is what I just mentioned, the middle mile capacity has to be in place. Um, good news is that's underway. I know, I I'm not sure where REC is in their uh construction and in Rappahannock or in uh King William, but we're confident that they're going to meet our schedule. Um, we've had great meetings with them. We're putting in some processes that we learned on the Northern Neck with the Northern Neck Electric Cooperative uh with REC, so we feel very confident in that partnership. And then Dominion obviously just got approved last month, and um they're going to meet all the timelines that are necessary to make this project happen. Um, the number one dependency that kind of goes under the radar in all of this is the utility pole make ready. Um, so what that means is before we can go and attach our fiber optic cables to an electric pole, the every single pole that's going to be attached to needs to be fielded. Uh, it needs to be engineered, it needs to be insured, you know, someone needs to take a hard look at it and make sure that it can be attached to if it if the pole needs to be replaced, if there are existing attachers that need to move. Um, so that's a very long process. Um, and folks will start going out in the field here shortly to literally go to every pole that we're going to attach to, take photos of it, um, stand next to it with a pole that shows how low the sag is from the lowest attacher. So it's it's quite the process, um, and it's really an unprecedented amount of make ready that's going to happen, uh, not just in King William, but across the whole Commonwealth, because um the vast majority of electric poles that do not have an attachment today will be receiving one. Uh, and that's just a huge undertaking between the ISPs like like All Points and the electric utilities like REC and Dominion. Uh, and the last dependency, and this is something that we do to manage uh labor shortages, is we like to build a significant queue of constructible miles before we release them to a vendor. Um, so if we have a construction crew, we want to make sure that they have at least six weeks typically of constructible work uh in an area before we release them to that area. If we only release them with two weeks of work, and then for whatever reason, the make ready doesn't come through, or there's a delay here, a permit there that we didn't get in time, and we can't keep that crew, you know, Fri- a Friday close of business, we don't have mo- work for them that Monday, they're gone to Pennsylvania, North Carolina, another state, and we're not seeing them for another two months. So uh, one thing we do to ensure that we have crews and they're dependable and on site is we want to make sure that there's a big bucket of work for them to do before we release it to them. So that's one thing that we're working on now. That's why we're front loading all the low level design work. Uh, we're going to make sure that we get all the low level design complete, um, that all the constructible miles are ready, and then they'll be released to a construction vendor who will be out be out in the field hanging the actual fiber optic cable. I think it's important to, and I mentioned this, it's important to appreciate the scale of the utility pole make ready that's that's happening, um, and will continue to happen throughout next year. Uh, you know, I think our electric utility partners like REC, um, in a typical year, I'm making up this number, but they might receive three hundred pole attachment requests, which is three hundred poles um throughout their whole footprint for an entire year, uh, and we're going to be ramping up to a thousand poles a month in just King William, uh, well beyond that throughout their whole footprint. Uh, so it's a huge undertaking. Um, you know, thankfully, we have a real really close relationship with REC and Dominion. Um, there are partners beyond pole attachments. Um, so we feel very confident that they're going to get there, um, but it's just important to understand the scale of what's what's about to happen. So when we think about construction sequence, the project, the King William project and all of our projects are are divided into fiber, what we call FDAs or fiber distribution areas. Um, and these are essentially subsets of King William County. Um, so I think there are four to six FDAs in King William. And, you know, typically, this is the flow of what what our project will look like. Like I said, we like to get the we like to get a large queue of constructible work ready, and that means you have to get the low level design complete, which is what we've started this month. And you have to do the make ready, um, and that is going to get going here soon. Um, and then there's the network construction. Um, that's obviously sending crews out into the field to uh put the fiber on electric poles or um where necessary burying the fiber. Uh, and then there's installations and ongoing operations. Um, so what we'll do is we will build out an entire fiber distribution area. Um, we will not light folks along the way, so we will not offer services to just ten out of three hundred locations within a fiber distribution area. We will build out the whole thing. Uh, we will ensure that it's ready to go. We'll make sure that, you know, all of our internal systems can accommodate the customers, and then we'll light it all at once. Um, and I'll get more into how we're going to communicate with uh King William residents um in a bit. So, you know, this is this is somewhat obvious, but we're going to try and, if there are more constructible routes, meaning, you know, we don't have to cross a bunch of creeks, or we don't have to replace a lot of electric electric poles or anything like that, um, those will move up in our queue. So if there's a if there's an FDA in King William that um we feel like we can get going quicker, then that will move higher on the list. But, you know, our our biggest concern and what we're most focused on is ensuring that there's a steady and reliable queue of work that's moving through the project. Uh, so like I mentioned, when we have that fiber distribution area and we feel like we're about ninety days out from when customers can receive service, we will start notifying folks. Um, it's really important that we're not, and and it's you, most folks um might notice that we're not aggressively marketing right now. Um, you know, we're not out in the paper. We don't have billboards and, you know, door hangers and all that stuff. Um, and that and that's on purpose. We want to be quiet right now as we're, there's no fire, we can't hook up people right now, so we don't want to set the false expectation that we can. But um when we can, within ninety days, we're going to be very aggressive in marketing the service and ensuring that all the eligible locations in King William are aware that they can sign up for service. Um, and, you know, we'll be very aggressive in our marketing then, but ninety days is when the shot clock starts that we really start to push the, you know, push the service out in the community and get boots on the ground and um, you know, get our marketing really ramped up. Um, like I said, it, you know, it's kind of right now is the quiet before the storm, um, and then when the FDAs are lit or when they're able to receive service is when we'll uh aggressively market the service. So we do have a new website for folks, um, and it's apbfiber.com. Um, and this is where uh customers will go to sign up. So this will be on all the door hangers, all of our our digital marketing, you know, lawn signs, billboards, it'll be APB Fiber, that's where it's going to be driving people, um, and it's meant for mobile. So um, the website is really designed for people to get on with their cellphone and sign up really quick and easy, um, and all you have to do is click click the get started button. Um, and I'm going to walk you through what it looks like when you do that. Um, so if you go onto the website and you hit get started, you'll then go to a page where it prompts you to put in your address. Um, and it'll auto fill. Once you start typing in your address, it'll auto fill what it is, um, so you can select from that. There are two scenarios that could happen. Um, the first is if your FDA is lit, so if it's ninety days out and you've gotten a mailer that says sign up for service now, you know, we're going to be or pardon our construction or something like that, um, and you put in your address, it'll say you can sign up for services, um, and this is exactly how you do it. Um, you could, you know, you just put in your information, and then it prompts you to go on to select the plan that you want, uh, when you want someone to come out and uh install at your house. You can say I'm good for, you know, Tuesdays after three P M or a good time, those kind of things. Um, so thi- this is scenario one, if you're, if you sign up while we can uh provide services to you. The next scenario is if you uh see your neighbor, you know, see someone across the county who signed up, but your particular FDA is not ready yet. You folks might get this message, which is you're inside a planned service area, and they'll be available to you soon, but you can't necessarily sign up right that minute. You can't select a plan right that minute. Um, so, you know, folks can register the location. Uh, we already have all the locations, so people don't need to do this, but certainly helps and uh will alert them uh whenever they can sign up for service. So they'll get emails from us and say, hey, you can sign up for service now. Uh, please select your plan and provide your information. Again, we're going to be contacting customers ninety days out of when they can be serviceable, um, and that's really important. We don't want to set expectations too far. We don't want to have people signing up now and not getting service for six months, uh, you know, because people it, we've just found that it's better to deliver on time and and uh, you know, on a short amount of period instead of making promises year or six months out, uh, people can get disenfranchised with the service. Okay, so just want to go over the service levels that we're going to be offering in the county. Um, first, All Points is participating in a federal subsidy program called the Affordable Connectivity Program or ACP. Um, and this is a thirty dollar a month discount to qualifying households. Um, and there's a bunch of qualifiers to it. If you have someone in the household that receives free and reduced lunch, SNAP, Medicaid, there's a whole host of programs, um, and it's it's really easy to qualify for the program, meaning the process. Um, they've made it very easy, and we have a dedicated staff, you know, all of our customer service reps, our sales team are well versed in the program. We have a portal on our website where people can uh see if they're eligible, they can sign up for the program. We're going to be marketing it. Um, so residents who are eligible will have every opportunity to sign up for it if they haven't already. So these are the service tiers that are going to be offered in King William. This is hopefully nothing new. Um, and we include the ACP pricing here for the folks uh that are eligible to receive the discount. Um, so you can see that right there. So a really important point, uh, that, you know, All Points does different than most uh broadband providers. Within the first twelve months, the standard installation fee is going to be one ninety-nine, and that's regardless of length. So regardless of how long your driveway is, if you sign up within the first twelve months, it's a flat one ninety-nine for standard installation. Uh, and that's huge. I mean, I I know that y'all have probably heard the horror stories of people getting quoted ridiculous amounts to, because they have a long driveway. Um, so it just makes sense for us because we're going to, you know, there's going to be a big ramp up period within the first twelve months of the network being available. We're going to have a lot of people signing up. We're going to have folks out in the field. So it makes sense for us to get as many of these long drops or, you know, long driveways signed up within that twelve months when we have staff out in the field, as opposed to two years from now when we have to send someone out just for a onesie twosie. Um, if for whatever reason someone doesn't sign up in the first twelve months, um, the standard installation, the one ninety-nine would then cover within five hundred foot um of the nearest terminal, which is still about double what uh most incumbent providers offer. Um, if you're beyond that five hundred foot, locations will have a transparent and fair per foot charge, uh, that we update quarterly. Right now, it's about a buck twenty-five per foot. So it would be one ninety-nine that would cover the five hundred feet, and then beyond that, it'd be a buck twenty-five per foot or something in that neighborhood.
Is this underground?
No, so this would be for standard installations only, which would mean aerial. Uh, underground would be a case by case basis, because we, you know, we just don't know what that would entail. So the reporting that we're going to be doing uh throughout the life of this project, we're going to be reporting monthly to DHD in the county, um, and it's, the whole project is premised on us, uh, three milestones that we're going to be delivering. The first is miles released from low level design. Uh, so this is what I mentioned, you know, the the in-depth engineering that happens uh kind of behind the scenes that produces the constructible plans. Uh, so that's the first milestone. The second is miles constructed, that's uh pretty straightforward, and the third is serviceable units passed. I think something that's really important to note is that local funds and state funds are only released to All Points when the work is complete. So this program is based on a reimbursement basis. Uh, so it is only when milestones are achieved and work is complete that any local or state funds are released to All Points. We will also hold a quarterly project coordination meetings uh with the county, the county's project lead um ourselves, and then the electric utilities if it's applicable. Um, and this is more of an in-depth session to go through the status of the project and answer any questions that the county might have, or go through anything that the county's hearing, or, you know, this is just a a good time to get the project leads together uh to check in. Uh, and then finally, you know, when we're a little bit farther along in twenty twenty-three, um, we will hold a public meeting or a public um event of sorts, um, and this could be, you know, a groundbreaking ceremony. This could be the first customer in the county getting connected. Um, there, this could be a a public institution, a firehouse or something like that getting connected. Um, it could be the last person getting connected. Um, so, you know, we'll work with the county and the project lead and the board, whatever, you know, we'll defer to y'all uh how you want to do that, but uh we'll be in touch. We definitely want to have that because, you know, along with celebrating the the milestone and uh the achievement of getting universal. uh, the achievement of getting universal broadband in King William, it's also a great uh awareness opportunity to, to raise awareness for the project and ensure that people know, you know, to sign up within twelve months to get the flat fee regardless of how long your driveway is. Uh, those kinda things. So just to wrap up, you know, how can y'all help? Uh, I think, you know, spread the word, of course. APBFiber.com, if you have constituents reaching out, this is the website you should send them to. Uh, we are hiring uh a lot of different positions uh from sales and marketing folks to fiber techs, you know, the people who are connecting folks out in the field to everything in between, back office jobs. So, um, you know, please send them to any interested folks to our website. Um, and then, you know, finally, I think managing expectations, appreciating the scale of the project is really important. We are undergoing a tremendous period of growth in the, in the broadband industry right now. Uh, there's a lot of constraints on the supply chain and, you know, supply chain for broadband, but also electric components. Um, we feel like we have a, a great hold on our supply chain and you know, we feel really confident in our electric partners being able to fulfill their obligations with their supply chain. But you know, crazy things happen. There's a hurricane in Florida, you know, there lot of variables out there. So it's just important to remember that it's a unique time that we're in. Uh, similarly, you know, labor availability is, is always tough. Um, and I, you know, again, I think it's the most important thing we can all do right now is just manage expectations. We don't wanna over promise. Um, you know, we wanna over deliver. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that folks might have.
I thought there was a place to sign up now, just to let you know uh that there is.
Thought it was Breeze Line.
No, 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 hold on.
What's it?
It, it, there is. And Kyle confirmed, please, that the people that have already signed up, that will transition over to your new database.
Yeah, that's correct. That's a good point, Ed. Um, we, we had a website and they're connected. Uh, this new one is just our, our customer database essentially. Uh, but a- anyone who's provided any information to us as it pertains to this project, we have that information. And I also just wanna reiterate, it's not incumbent, you know, it's not required that someone sign up pre-sign up to be able to receive service. If you've never even contacted us at all, you're still gonna get marketing materials. You're still gonna be eligible for the project.
You mentioned uh the thirty dollar discount for those that qualify. Is that, I assume these people are gonna sign a contract. Uh, how long does, will that last? Will it last as long as they are participating?
So the program is actually structured to where um the F C C, which is the subsidy giver, provides the subsidy directly to All Points. Um, it's not a situation where they provide it to the eligible household, and then that's brought to All Points. So um, they receive the subsidy as long as they're eligible and as, as long as they're a customer of All Points.
Uh, one more question. Uh, Mr. Hodges mentioned, asked you about underground. Maybe I misunderstood that. Hypothetically, if you're fourteen hundred feet off the road and you serve a underground utility for that length, is this still gonna be over here or will y'all install it underground?
It's really a case by case basis. If there's electric poles that are just aren't in use, we might use those. Um, i- if, if it's solely underground, uh, we would likely go underground. We, I think, you know, typically our construction team likes to follow the electric. Um, there's different types of undergrounding too. So if there's boring, which is much more expensive, that's if there's rock or obstacles. Um, and then there's plowing, which is a less expensive form of undergrounding, which, you know, it only goes about six inches or ten inches under the ground. Um, so there's just a ton of variables that come along with underground drops. Um, so it's, it's hard. We can't provide a flat rate for that, but because every situation is so drastically different.
If, if it is underground, it will still be free, how, how, however y'all install it? Or, or not?
It would be one ninety-nine.
Uh, right, yeah, one ninety-nine, okay. That's all.
I've got a couple, and that, not to beat the underground horse to death real quick, but I did have ones on the subject. Um, not just for drops themselves, but for middle mile. I know that there are neighborhoods around the county where Dominion has been um, using some of their engineering partners to survey for undergrounding their utilities in those neighborhoods. Uh, what's the level of coordination going on there between you guys and Dominion as to whether, you know, if you guys engineer a neighborhood and you've got a, you know, expecting a bunch of poles to be there and you get there and Dominion's undergrounded the entire electric utility, you guys are I hope working together on that, so you know where those projects are taking place as you're building out.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We, we work extremely close with Dominion. We talk weekly. Um, and you know, that, that's something that would be covered we, in our fielding exercise. So we send folks out in the field. Uh, but we get poll data from Dominion, so we know that upfront where the underground areas are, where the aerial areas are. Um, and you know, yes, we, that, that is covered. We work very closely with Dominion.
Um, if I could just give one more, that you, the, the twelve month timeframe, you know, we've been working on the eighteen month timeframe for a long time and now we're on twelve, and that's, that's great. How, how firm are we and how confident are we in that, in that timeline and, you know, outside of the variables that you already stated that, that could cause trouble one way or another, what's when we're telling our constituents, you know, where we are with this project from, from right now, like if we go out tomorrow, we, you know, we feel the question on this, how confident can we be in the twelve month time?
Very confident. I mean, I, I would say if the constituent asks you, just say that, that the project will be complete by August of next year. Um, what we can't provide right now and what we won't provide is like, we're coming down, you know, Shallow Creek Road uh, June tenth. You know, we, we're never gonna provide that level of detail because there's too many variables, you know, that close to the ground. Um, but you know, ninety days out from a location, they'll be notified uh when service is available.
One, one last question for me, just, just to get an idea of what, um, what we can expect. Um, I don't know how far along you are with the Northern Neck uh bill, but I know you, you're, you're farther along than you are with us. What's, what's been the adoption rate up there? Um, I know that was um something that was much discussed as we were moving around here, how many uh, what percentage of passes we could expect to actually take up service? What, what have you been seeing up there?
Yeah, I think our initial uh areas have been around fifty to sixty percent. But you know, that'll, that'll vary in community across community. And that'll, that'll tick up over time also.
And that's typically the industry standard.
Yeah, that's it.
Anyone else? How is the uh connection fee uh A C P eligible?
I don't believe so. I think that only goes to their monthly bill. Um, but I'll look into that and get back with you.
I've never seen anything uh else about that. And would you mind going back to your service map?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Can everybody see that?
Yes. It's building. I just wanna clarify a few things for the audience and people online. If you look at the central part there, that is covered by, currently by Breeze Line, all uh, Atlantic Broadband now Breeze Line. So that blank area in the center there is all uh Breeze Line. If you look at the northern part of King William, this above the All Points uh intended service area, that is under a bid through Breeze Line through the Federal Communications Commission, R D O, Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. They have been approved, the F C C re- just recently approved uh Breeze Line to service that area. They have up to, I think now, five years to complete that effort. We are waiting on uh some decisions on their end. It's all based on another round of body uh awards coming up, we hope in December. And so hopefully we'll be able to uh start building that area sooner than later. So just, just for those of you, I know a few of you live in that area. Uh, there is good news. We are, uh, it, it is coming. It's just a matter of when. So uh, anything else for us, Kyle? We appreciate the presentation. It's all good news.
No.
Anybody hear me?
Yes. Sorry, Steve.
Yeah, I've been trying to ask a question for the last ten minutes. I mean, this is I've heard several conflicting items at just tonight's meeting. It also compounds on the stuff we've heard before. Uh, you said this whole center area is supposed to be Breeze Line, but the only thing in the central area that you had where it's all empty is just a few houses and alet. There's nobody else served by Breeze Line in that area, and they told us they're not coming to our houses, and I don't understand what this next mile is. I'm on Rabahannic Power, and we're all underground. All the neighborhoods in our area are underground. I just heard tonight, he said that the undergrounds aren't being covered, and they'll be covered on a case by case basis for cost, not the one ninety-nines. And then he said maybe one ninety-nine. So I don't know if we're gonna, the people that aren't being covered by Breeze Line now are ever gonna get covered, or is that the thing you were just talking about with that extra program that's maybe five years before we get it?
Did, did you put your address then to the website?
Yes, I'm on the list, and my parents and my aunt have already got on there that I've put their names on there because I wanted them to have internet. They've already come out and located the poles, cause I talked to the Virginia Power Man as he's taking pictures of the poles in their yard. So, and they don't even really want it. But the people that have their name on the list, I mean, I have nothing to show that, that my name's even on there, so.
So whether you're, whether you get your electricity from aerial or underground, whether you're gonna be a aerial drop or underground drop, if you're part of the project, you're part of the project. You're eligible to receive service through this grant. Um, so those, if you have underground, it doesn't mean you're out of the project. When I was talking about the standard installation, um, and the one ninety-nine, um, that is for the first twelve months regardless of length for aerial drop, you know, standard installation is aerial. Um, and that's the vast majority of most electric drops, which is, you know, the broadband will follow the electric.
Yes, except for all the neighborhoods and alet and Kinnington and all those places that have everything underground and all the new subdivisions. So are you saying now that none of the air, underground ones that are served now are gonna be covered by Rabahannic or Atlantic? Unless we pay extra?
No, those are all gonna be covered. Those are part of the project.
Okay, and then
We just can't, I can't give you a one ninety-nine flat fee for those because we don't know, they, they vary so greatly.
That's what I'm asking. So it's not gonna be one ninety-nine. It could be a thousand dollars for some of those people.
It very well could, but it could be less. I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that they're all gonna be a thousand dollars, they're all gonna be a hundred dollars. I mean, it, it's gonna
That was the whole purpose of this whole plan. Everybody in the county was supposed to get served for one ninety-nine, no matter how far they live off the road, no matter what kinda service they have. And now we're finding all sorts of, of ifs and buts.
Mr. Greenwood, if we could uh maybe take this offline.
We can, but I've talked about this before, and you keep pushing it down the road every time we talk about it.
Let's get together and talk about it in person with Mr. Rosner and Mr. And instead of exploding tonight, not getting anything done, we can, we can sit down and figure it out.
Okay, that's fine.
And uh, Kyle, one more question about underground versus aerial. If uh, for whatever reason, Dominion, you go ahead and you uh hook up down in the lower end of King William towards West Point, and Dominion is behind schedule on bringing aerial energy down and burying it. Is there some sort of synchronization there, or are you confident that you'll be able to match whatever they do?
Yeah, we'll be able to match whatever they do. Um, again, that would when we're planning and going through the low level design phase, uh, the availability of the middle mile factors into that. So I doubt that there would be a scenario where uh we are middle mile providers, whether it's R E C or Dominion would be behind. Uh, and we would be ahead of them, cause we would just shift things around and construct in areas where it was ready.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Uh, I guess we'll uh try to get you on board here, uh, next milestone, if, if, if not next month.
Yep, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. All right, next up we have Ms. Linda Hodges, Executive Director, Metal Peninsula, Northern Neck Community Services Board of an opioid, opioid abatement funding request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of King William, both for Hodges. For this opportunity to speak tonight about um services that we've provided, North and Northern Neck C S B to members of this community who are biggest opioids. I have with me Amanda Campanola, who's the Director of Community-Based Services, and she'll talk about the residential components of our services. Um, and then finally, we'll have a video at the end um from a peer recovery specialist. Um, and she's gonna talk about our peer recovery services. Um, so I was thinking on the way up here tonight that um I would be remiss if I didn't talk about a couple other services that sometimes um have been impacted by addiction. Um, and on the one extreme, we have early intervention services. And that's for children up to eight, through age two, who are born, possibly developmental disabilities or, and or physical disabilities. Um, but often, um, I do hear all too frequently about children who are born addicted of, from parents who are addicted, um, not just opioids, but other, other um, um, drugs. And then on the other end, we have emergency services, crisis services. And they also, um, because of addiction, um, people often, or their families end up in crisis because of the individual's abuse. And that's when they reach out to us to um, to try to get you sent into the hospital um, or do something because it's gotten out of control. Um, but, but I came here to talk about um really the cascade of services that we have to individuals who want treatment for substance, substance use. Um, but I'll talk specifically, more specifically about opioids tonight. And, and I wanna start out with um outpatient services. So if someone calls us or reaches out to us for services, we ask them, they're um seeking treatment for opioid. Because that's a priority service to us. So they might have other services that they're interested, but if it's opioid, then it goes to the top of the list and we have to speed them up in seventy-two hours, again, we call it priority population. That means it can be injections, IV use, or they're a pregnant or parenting um woman. Um, so all of our services, when we assess, are um what we call um, we use A C S, the Addiction Soci- I'm sorry, the Society, American Society of Addiction, Serve Medicine. And their assessment is based on six components, six things they look at in addictions, their present use and past use, and withdrawal to their health history, their physical condition, their thoughts, emotions, mental health, or with what trauma they had in their life. Um, or are they suicidal at the time because of their use? Fourth is readiness and interest in, in treatment. Not everybody comes to us ready to change. Sometimes they come to us because a family member is putting pressure on the spouse maybe, or a parent or a child. And so they might not be as interested in change themselves. And also their relapse experiences, how many times have they tried to stop using and have relapsed? We need that information. And finally, we need information about their living situation. Who are the people and the places and the things that surround them? Amanda's gonna talk a little bit about this, which discusses the role of residential services. Because we know that when someone is surrounded by people who are also using, the chances of them um being successful in treatment are less. So from the assessment, the type and the frequency of treatment is then recommended. So our initial or go-to service is our outpatient program, our intensive outpatient program, which is a group. Um, it meets three times a week, and with an intensive outpatient program, we mean intensive, three times of um a week for three hours per session, and that usually lasts for sixteen weeks. And throughout that sixteen weeks, the participants are reassessed to see if they're finding success or not success in their treatment. During this time, they're also expected to participate in um, in, in A groups or A A groups, whatever is appropriate. So um, what we, as I said, this is kind of our go-to. And unless there are medical considerations in withdrawing from the drug, we highly recommend intensive outpatient treatment first as opposed to inpatient. We often have family members who say, can you send them to inpatient? They need inpatient. But they've not tried to um, to seek treatment in the community through our intensive outpatient program. It's less expensive, but it's also the treatment that in real time is uh relative to their everyday life. They're not going to come out of the treatment and come back to their family and back to the community, they're here during the treatment. Um, we also provide I O P, intensive outpatient for people who are a step down from inpatient. Our program is also evidence-based. And that means that our treatment is based on therapy and that's research-based and it's found to be successful. We don't just go in there and do what we feel like doing, it is evidence-based. So, um, I want to talk a little bit about MATS, which is kind of a, a lot of discussion in, in, um, in the field, that's called medication-assisted treatment. And because opioids are one of the most difficult drugs to quit using, it's so highly addictive, that, that oftentimes we can, we do use, um, medication-assisted treatment. Because that can be an essential part of helping individuals with opioid addiction, so they can sustain their recovery. When we use the term MAT, when I use the term MAT, I mean that there's the use of medications in combination with counseling and psychosocial supports. So we kind of treat the whole, the whole person. Now, the medications that are here in relation to MAT are Suboxone, that's also, you, youphrenoprine. I'm not pronouncing that correctly, I apologize, methadone, which is probably the oldest term that we've used as far as MAT. Uh, it's been around for a long time and now Trexza. Um, we contract these services, we work with, um, people that do provide the services and we ensure that, um, before we use them, we look at other treatment options. But what I think is citing an integral part of the MAT program is our transportation that we provide for individuals. Because what we know, people who are addicted often don't have transportation, they've lost their license. Or their income is such that they can't sustain a license and a vehicle and insurance. So we often use our peer support department, which then in turn transports them to those appointments. So we use our internal resources to help people get to their appointments to have the best, hopefully, the success in, in treatment. Now, I'm now going to turn it over to Amanda and she's going to discuss a little bit about our residential services. And after that, um, fingers crossed, we're going to have a, a short video about peer recovery.
So I'm just going to speak tonight briefly on what we call Discovery Place, which is a transitional home that we have in Middlesex County. Um, it's a structured program, it was established in two thousand and six. Um, it's co-ed with eight beds and twenty-four seven supervision there. Um, so as I said, it's structured, so it's a program where people get support, they work, they're doing recovery meetings, they're in treatment, they're going to school. But at the same time, they have that supportive recovery environment, um, to come back to and grow from and then transition back into their homes and to the community. Um, so the focus of that is, you know, supports building skills and treatment there at Discovery. And then we can do the video.
Hello, my name is Shirley Fallon, I'm in long-term recovery. I've been employed with this agency for two and a half years as a peer recovery specialist. My primary responsibility is working with the post overdose response team, PORT. PORT offers supportive outreach to people within both this agency and our community who are at high risk of opioid overdose and/or substance misuse as well as mental health challenges. PORT provides connection to the community with professionals and non-professional services and the resources available which will assist individuals and their unique needs on their road to recovery. When we say connecting community with care, it means including mental and physical healthcare, individual and group counseling, inpatient and outpatient treatment, harm reduction options, housing, employment, food, transportation, government services and more. The Recovery Service Department has two locations in our ten-county community, in Warsaw and in Gloucester. Presently, there are twenty peer recovery specialists employed. These individuals are dedicated to offering hope and encouragement. How? By engaging individuals and family members in a recovery-oriented, oriented way of living. Peer recovery specialists take on many roles, but one of the most important is our lived experience. Having lived experience, we are able to model that recovery is possible for all. We'd hold the hope for them until they are ready to take it back for themselves. Connection is the key, we need each other to improve a way of survival. Peer-to-peer recovery helps overcome unhealthy cycles of addiction and mental health challenges. By sharing with others, a lot, living a life in recovery, we are organically and authentically equipped to listen and empathy and compassion and help guide them to break free of the isolation. With awareness of what it was like and by sharing our stories, we're able to guide others to achieve a healthy pathway to recovery and support health and wellness. Peer support means simply that we help each other, solve issues around life challenges, assisting in making better choices, connecting to the right people, getting and giving support. We listen to each other's needs and reach goals and as always, remember, nothing about us without us. We thank you for listening and learning and appreciate any consideration of financial support for this ongoing work. Thank you.
So I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Well, right off that only, only jail board, and we are constantly now hearing to do away with all the treatment programs and to mitigate. And if we would, and we would pick up that expense to count. Which would be extremely-
So I'm hearing you say that just to offer medication and no treatment in jails, is that what they're saying? I'm not sure that-
There's a push of that.
There is a push of that. Just be done away with treatment and just medicate people and go on their way.
Right. And even if they come in, we asked the question, if they come in and they, they've been off the drug or never owned the drugs, they can get it too. All they got to do is say that they need it.
Um-
Am I close on that, Sheriff?
Well, um, I need to make the phone call, because I've not heard that.
We're hoping it'll go away, but-
Right. So is the move from, from the criminal justice system, is that where the move's from?
Moves from doing any kind of treatment.
Okay.
And just go ahead and medicate.
I hear the push was from, you know, from the department, from Department of Justice or-
Well, I hear it's from the pharmaceuticals.
There you go.
That's what I hear.
Well, that would make sense, yeah. I mean, that's kind of what got us in the line to begin with.
Right.
With opioid restrictions.
And I was looking at the figures here, they ain't do much to pay for all that.
That's correct. That's correct, I had not heard what you're talking about.
Yeah, we've heard it for months now.
Is to sell their medications.
And we've heard that for months, yeah. And I'm sure it'll be some generic thing like methadone, you know, to take place.
Yes, yes.
But yeah, we're hearing that real strong in several meetings lately. And it's a warning to us, the cost, uh, that we could be facing.
Yes.
These, these drugs that are used in the, uh, MAT program?
Yes.
They are also addicted to, aren't they?
Absolutely, that's why, that's why, um, it's important to monitor, to make sure that it's prescribed, that it's used appropriately. Because you're exactly right, they can snort, I mean, there's all kinds of creative ways that they can use it, absolutely.
Is this MAT program, is that, is that kind of like an outpatient or is this a full-blown rehab?
No, it's outpatient.
It is. Well, Matt, uh, I've, I've spoken about this before in my time on the multi-jurisdictional, uh, grand jury with you. I mean, this was probably four years ago. And the things that I heard, you know, four years ago, fentanyl was very new. And we heard a few things about fentanyl. And it's really saying, you know, heroin, fentanyl, pharmaceuticals. Uh, some of the people said that they, you know, just like you said, it initiated with a prescription. So, it's tough.
And how many, how many patients, uh, from, related to King William at any given time?
At any given time?
On average?
I don't have that data in front of me.
Two, three, four?
Opioid treatment? Um, I would say probably two or three or four is probably accurate.
And any idea of the success rate, rehab success rate?
Um, no, I don't have that information, broken up by counties or, or even across the board. Would you, um, there is, with some of our funding, there is federal outcome measures that they, they do all along. I've never gotten, um, uh, information from that, but we provide the, um, the questionnaire, the complete questionnaire and submit it.
It's not real high, so.
Opioids are, we're talking about opioids, it's really a very difficult, uh, partly because the withdrawal is so incredibly uncomfortable. It's, you talk about having a flu, it's worse than that. Um, so just going through withdrawal is incredibly difficult. That's where sometimes with a MAT can come in and people have tried, you know, tried different things and not been successful. It's not our go-to, our first go-to, but it is after someone's been working and trying and just not finding success.
Still missing coffee? Nothing on that. Ladies, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And gentlemen, we'll, uh, we'll vote on the resolution at the end of the month meeting. Okay, if you could bring up Mr. Hawkins, uh, Ms. Brown, did you want to preface anything? Did you want to preface anything before Mr. Hawkins comes on? Uh, yes. Is that, anybody see that on the agenda?
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kate, you're, you're welcome, Sheriff.
Union Haze.
Girls.
Who's good first? All right. Gentlemen, I certainly do thank you, uh, 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 certainly by any stretch of magic, don't want to take anything away from the C S B. They're great partners that we have. But I do, you know, sometimes I, I wondered, are we, what are we having done here locally? In twenty-one, we were funded to twenty-one overdoses. So far this year, we've responded to twenty-seven. Uh, our guys in the first line, people on the scene, we provide Narcan, the miracle drug, that brings them out of their overdose until rescue arrives. Now, this money, I don't know how much it is now, forty thousand, something like that. And if maybe we could share a little bit to the local level, so we could use it here and get some to the C S B, I think that would be great. I would love to see, and I think Mr. Kate may chime in on this also, I would love to see more treatment done here in King William. You know, our folks, you know, that are addicted to opioids, opioid, travel a great distance to go get that help. And Warsaw is blocked, being a long way when you have a car to travel. And I'm glad to hear that they have peer transportation, these folks can't afford that. They can't afford a car, they can't afford gas to drive back and forth, they're relying on someone else to get them there. Most time they're begging people, they can't get them there. So if, you know, if the C S B has that, that, uh, transportation in place, I think it's great. Uh, but it would certainly be nice, and we had for a short period of time, a, a, uh, office up here for the C S B, it didn't, it didn't last, I don't know why it went away. But it really would be nice if some funds somewhere along the way, and I don't know if I've talked to the wrong people, uh, to have that maybe back here. That's just my thought. Yeah, C S B does a wonderful job, also a great partner.
And I, I would echo that, and I'm on the C S B board, I'm a King William representative on the C S B board. I, I, I emailed Linda some thoughts about having a, uh, a, uh, center, treatment center for the C S B office in King William, and we did have one. Uh, she explained to me that it was not financially feasible and I know C S B, like a lot of organizations, uh, that rely on government funding are, they were struggling. Um, but that doesn't change, I think my sheriff, the sheriff and I, our opinions, that King William is the third, second or third largest, depending on what you look at in terms of population of the, the town's served by the C S B. Gloucester and then Westmoreland and that's for about the same population. The C S B has a very tight budget, uh, for all of the programs that they have. They have everything, I, I think Linda outlined, you know, some of the things they do, they do a lot of stuff, so. Uh, but for our folks, and, and I'm specifically talking about this pot of money that, that was mandated to be spent on opioids, I think. Uh, for our folks, I, I agree with the sheriff, I think we, we probably would like to be able to have tangible things that we have helped our people, our own community with. Whether that's pitching that money into the C S B and, uh, having them helping their programs. You know, three or four folks a year, I, I, I personally am aware of a lot more than that, that, that need the treatment locally. And the sheriff and I tend to be with folks in a different paradigm than a lot of others. And once someone's law enforcement involved with their addiction, that's a separate, that's a subset of folks that have addiction issues. And their addiction issues have reached a point where, you know, they face incarceration, things like that. I, I don't ever get into the treatment, you know, one treatment is better than the other, because that's not my field. Uh, but I would say, you know, in reference to, to the statement of C, I believe the C S B does provide the services in the jails right now. Because of the intensive outpatient program, maybe some of the I P I. I'd like to get a heads up if the jail board is being pressured and doing that, that's not, that's not an adequate solution.
I think they're pushing to get general assembly to, to do it.
Wow.
As far as that's going for, we're just hearing that.
You know, we're being recorded right now, but my thoughts on that, I won't care about the general public involved in that, but, um, the, the, uh, the issue that we have in King William, that I see in my office and the sheriff too, I think about this. Folks, they will say or do anything to get out of going to jail. If they're, if they have an addiction, if their addiction is the root cause of their criminal activity, they will say or do anything. And the treatment programs, most of the treatment programs that, that they access are in Richmond or in Leno. And, uh, we don't have a lot of people going back to Rabahannic, and if we should, uh, it's a shorter distance for most, but then we don't. So what, what I would just say is I, and I wrote down some ideas that I had and I, I don't want to, I did give Linda a heads up about this, but I, you know, for example, uh, tuition for, not tuition, but financial assistance directly to our citizens to, to attend a, an intensive outpatient program. That's something that we could use this money potential for. Well, obviously we have to figure out a way to make sure that it's awarded correctly, but that, that's an idea that, that would help. Uh, if we can't have our own community services board office in King William, uh, then we should be, I, I feel, you know, as King William Council's tentative, it's our job to try to do as much of it as possible. I would also suggest that having a community services board office is a good function of government. And that the county and the C S B can come to some sort of this agreement. That would benefit our citizens from that, not just our folks with addiction issues, but folks with mental health issues and folks that are often co-occurring. Uh, so those are some of the thoughts that I have is, is, you know, if the county's able to provide the rent or the whole, for a building. If that's what helps the C S B stay, but maybe that's something the county government should be exploring. Because this, this is not, this is a life or death type of situation for many of us. And, uh, you know, I, I, I will tell you that nothing more, uh, difficult to watch. With body camera, a deputy trying to revive somebody who's laying in the middle of the road, uh, who doesn't respond. So in any, that does are my thoughts, I, I do think that we're looking going forward, that, that we really should- So in any, that does are my thoughts, I, I do think that we're looking going forward, that, that we really should be thinking in terms of what that could possibly best. Or partnering with King Queen, I mean, there's ways to do this, I think that would help our folks.
No, I, I just want to reiterate again, you know, what I heard when I was, this is four years ago. Those numbers are, are, I would think much greater today than what they were then, in those sad stories. In, in math's light, you know, those, those people will say and do anything to, I guess, to, you know, skirt the system. But it's, you know, it's, it's a very tough thing.
I think what I, I'm sorry, yeah, I, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing, you know, I'm wondering is that, you know, the CFP is, is a vital partner. In the same essence, we need to find ways to direct this money more immediately locally to needed areas. In addition to helping the CFP maintain and expand their program, so. You know, I know we've got a resolution that we'll come back with on the twenty-eighth. And that resolution, as I understand it, would be to basically commit this money to, to the CFP. But I'm gathering tonight that we might want to spend some more time thinking about how we divide that up. So I guess, Mr. Chairman, depending on what we can come back with, whether or not we want to consider a resolution that accomplishes that task. If we think that's sufficient time, or if we think we need more time. I think, you know, what I'm hearing from our, from our people that are, that are seeing this every day is that they need some help too.
And I think Mr. Kite and Sheriff would be integral in developing this plan, if not already, I'm sure you're deep into it already, but get more involvement. Mr. Hawkins?
Yeah, man, just to let you know, King and Queen, their representative on the jail board is obviously looking to teach funds here. If they do approve that program, they'll pay for that.
These funds are one-time?
They're. So far we've been on the recent route, we were anticipating fifty thousand dollars for FY twenty-three. And then moving forward, we'll probably have about fifteen thousand a year.
One, five or five of them?
What's that?
Fifteen or fifteen?
Fifteen thousand, yeah, yeah. So it, it, it drops, yeah, but it is, it is extra money. But this is the biggest year because I believe it's Janson, the settlement with Janson, we received, I think, five years of our settlements in one year.
As far as our budget item, do we contribute?
No, there is no local match for this. There is something the state is doing that I've never seen before. If we comply with all of the reporting annually, we actually will have a twenty-five percent incentive of whatever we receive too. So there's a couple other pieces to the puzzle that, yeah, we hope to be able to present to you and, and, you know, kind of. I'm after meeting with Sheriff and Mr. Kite on Friday, I, I did see that there, there's, I don't know if we're gonna, we'd like to come up with a plan to kind of present to you guys, to, you know, work with the CFP, but then also somehow maybe withhold some funds to, you know, to give to our, the sheriff's office, I know he's been thinking of maybe, you know, the DARE programs, any one of our, some of our officers to, for some training. We can use it for that, we can use it for fire and EMS training, for, you know, responding to the calls. So there are certain things that we are able to use that for. But yeah, we are definitely, this isn't just, we almost said, let's put it to the back, you know, the other day. Because there's just, there's so much that, you know, there's potential where we could build something with the FFP, with this, this funding. I think Matt had mentioned maybe even speaking with King and Queen, if they wanted to do anything joint to maybe get work with the FFP to put something closer, you know, between, an inlet maybe, because I believe it's the closest one from us is Tapahammit.
How big of a building would you name facility?
That's something that we were throwing around.
How big is the one in Tapahammit? It's a region.
We're hoping to work with CFP tomorrow and have further discussions before. The money is there, it's not going anywhere, it's a special fund, we're, and we do not have to spend it this year.
Mr. Greenwood, do you have any questions or comments?
Nope, sounds good to me, it's, it's a shame, like, set it up, with all this sort of problems coming around. But yeah, I'd be interested in maybe trying to find a building if we could manage it going with King and Queen.
Okay. Mr. Hudson, is twenty-eighth going to be soon enough or?
I would think that it's going to depend on how much we get done, I have been in the discussion, but there's a lot to think about, so it might have to get pushed off.
And what are the, what are the ramifications of pushing it up?
There's not really a hurry right now, they are just, you know, the state is just now building the staff to actually oversee that. They won't even be finished until January one, I believe is what the, we have been presented. So this is something fairly new, the state is still trying to get their hands on and, and even get further guidance on how to utilize it.
So we, we need to make sure we get it right.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Branch? All right. Rough topic. Okay, now we're ready for Mr. Hawkins. And again, Ms. Brown, do you want to preface anything?
Well, no. Is he on there, Aaron?
Mr. Hawkins, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, so I can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have finally finished FY twenty-one, and, and we'll be presenting the final draft, I mean, the final financials to the board.
All right, and sorry about my, my video situation here, I'm kind of been sitting in my car, I was, I, I call it being out on tour. Doing audits throughout the Commonwealth this week, so I've been commuting today and kind of had to stop and attend the meeting via Zoom, and I do appreciate you letting me do that, as a, this is definitely a busy time for us during this time of the year to, to do a lot of audit fieldwork. So I'm here to present the final report, when, you know, when I was there before, it was a, it was a draft. And, and I do believe it's still something that, that, you know, required to officially present the final report to you all. And I think I even noted, noticing the agenda that Natasha, there's also a, a form that has to be notarized that gets sent to the APA that lets them know that, you know, we presented a final audit results and report to you, and that's what I'm doing now. So, you know, and I, I, I'm not sure if everyone there has a copy of the report in front of them or not, but, and I, and I don't plan on going through the report again, you know, none of our, you know, opinions or, or findings have changed from, from when I spoke to you previously. All that's still the same. The only things that have changed from the document you have now that's final from what you had previously is there's now a, a management's discussion and analysis that was prepared by management there. There's also the statistical information that's included in the back of the report. And there's also just been some punk, you know, I'll say punctual information that's been updated, typographical type things. You know, all of our reports have a quality control review that gets done to make sure that all the amounts in the report are correct, that all the numbers tie. You have correct, you know, verbiage within the report, so those types of things occurred from the draft that you, you had previously. But as I mentioned, the, the, the opinions and, and the findings are still the same as, you know, from when I saw you about a month ago. Are there any questions for me?
Gentlemen? Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Chair? I was just curious, does this mean that all the former problems or the issues we were having with the, some of the departments, all that stuff has been cleared up now? And we can move forward like with a clean slate?
I don't, I don't know that I, that I would say that, you know, I, you know, one of the big issues was, was, you know, from fiscal year twenty-one was, was the bank reconciliation. You know, being behind and getting that to be accurate. And, you know, I think that work in progress is still going on for, for FY twenty-two. You know, I don't, I don't, I don't think at this time that June has been reconciled yet, and it's probably a pretty big task for the folks that are working on that. And so no, I don't, I don't think you're out of the woods on that, I do think progress is being made. But I don't, I don't think there's been, until, until those bank reconciliations get caught up and they're being done, you know, on a monthly basis. I, I don't think you're at, you're out of the woods on those types of issues.
Okay, thank you very much.
And again, this is for the FY twenty-one. And then on the twenty-two, okay.
So I do have a question from Ms. Bryant. An incident occurred, correct, where some money was paid and turned out to be a fraud, is that correct?
That was actually in FY twenty-two, but it all happened, yeah.
So we haven't done that report, because I was reading in here that that has to be reported, correct? Page twenty-eight.
Aaron, is that something that would, would reflect in our, our financial statements for the annual audit?
For a fraudulent transaction?
Yeah. Value of it that would matter?
Yeah, that, it would, also if, if the amount were, were recovered, you know, I'm, I'm not sure. I don't know if I've, I can't remember if I've talked to you about that or not, but yeah, that the amount would matter, that the resolution of it would, would matter. You know, it, you know, if, if someone, if we're talking about someone just made a fraudulent transaction with some, you know, electronic transaction or some checks, and the bank refunded you for, for those monies, I don't think anything would probably need to be included in the financial statements or disclosed, if it was all resolved without any.
It's all except for what, three hundred dollars?
Three hundred, yeah, close to four hundred. So yes, no, it was only funded.
That's within the margin.
It was, yeah. The Federal Reserve actually got involved with that.
So gentlemen, what we're asking for tonight is for you to authorize myself and Mr. Hudson's to be able to sign the certification.
I'll make a motion to authorize a board chairman and the deputy county administrator to sign.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, any further discussion? Ms. Branch, you can call the board, please.
Hi. 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 Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Next up, Work Session Matters, Mr. Hudson with personal property tax clarifications.
Evening. What I would like to do tonight is really just remind everyone listening, as well as just discuss with the board, the actions that we and the board have taken to mitigate the increase in personal property value as it relates to everyone's personal property tax bills. You gentlemen have been, my opinion, on, on top of this for a number of months. And it was always made very clear to us and staff that your intent was to see what the increase was going to be in value and drop the tax rate accordingly, so that the burden would not be felt as a whole on the community. And the board took action back when it set the tax rate, or just a few months ago, to drop a dollar off of vehicle taxes. So personal property, the rest of the categories remained the same in order to drop the rate further for all the vehicles. All the citizens out there, cars, vans, trucks and motorcycles, the tax rate dropped from three sixty-five to two sixty-five. There was the only projected increase in those tax revenues or billings, I should say, would be just capturing the amount of growth in the county as far as additional vehicles over the previous year. So with that, I'll just open it up to discussion.
I mean, I think, people are looking at what the, the vehicles are assessed at, and they're reacting to that. It's, it's difficult, it's difficult to spread good information, it's very easy to get swamped in bad information. So, you know, you're correct, we, we were notified and the commissioner, you know, did her duty to notify us that this was coming and that we should consider actions to mitigate what people are going to be seeing as a final bill. And we took those actions, we actually went above what her recommended rate reduction was initially. You know, met her when she said that she thought it would be good if we did an, an extra few cents to, to just try to wipe out as, as much of that residual that you have for, for special assessments that want, or, or assessments that were outside of the bill. You know, unfortunately, we can't do anything about the assessments, you know. NEDA, which is now under budgeted power, they provide the vehicle values, we have to use the vehicle values. We do not, unlike real estate, as we know, we do not assess these pieces of property on a case-by-case basis. It is done blanket.
As it's been for.
As, as it always has been, and as it has to be by code, you know, and there's no methodology to, you know, to appeal anything on certain special system, except for the high mileage forms, which we, you know, we've tried to publicize when those need to, need to be in and.
Sometime.
Right, so. You know, I know there's a lot of that are, that are shocked by, by the values, and may disagree with what the values are that, that they, that they're seeing on the paper, but there's, there's, we can't do anything, and the commissioner can't do anything, the treasurer can't do anything about that. What, what we've all come together and done is everything that we can do to try to mitigate what the number is on the bottom, which is the, the number that they actually owe in taxes. You know, I've got my bill in the mail the other day, just like everybody else, you know, I'm, I'm pretty much right in line with where I was last year from a what do I owe standpoint, certainly the assessment on, on both vehicles that I have has gone up. But I'll tell you, the assessment of truck that I wrecked in January is dead on what I got for it in insurance money. So, you know, hard to argue that.
Well, there's one exception to an appeal process, and that would be if there's obviously an error, please.
If you don't own the vehicle and you can prove it.
Please get your evidence together and come see the commissioner. I'm sure they also should do their best. Do want to reemphasize, emphasize that personal property is divided between the county and the schools. Those are one of the three revenues that does go to the schools. Doesn't make you feel any better, but that's a fact.
So if you're out there and you're watching, and you know, a lot of people that are in the audience that have been here and that've seen this, this go on. But if you're, if you're listening online and you're listening and just, just you catch up on this topic, pull out your bill from last year, if, if you have the same, you know, car, two cars, three cars, whatever, and, and look at what you owed in, in taxes last year. Look at what you owe in taxes, this should be substantially the same. And that, that was our goal. So, you know, the assessments are what they are. And, and again, just to reiterate, there's nothing that, that we or the commissioner can do to, to change that. So other than just an error in which maybe you don't own a vehicle anymore, or something in that case. But remember also that we're not a prorating locality, unlike what I have seen out there online. We are not the only non-prorating locality by a long shot. Most, most localities are sized, and most localities contiguous to us, contiguous to us do not prorate. It, it's a big effort as far as bandwidth and resources goes to do that. So, so we, we've researched it, but we still don't. Just because of the, of the effort and the, the extra cost that it would take to do something like that. So if you, if a vehicle was owned on January one, it will appear in your tax bill, whether or not you sold it on January two or two weeks ago or what have you, it will be on.
Mr. Greenwood?
And yes, I did have a, a question, some of my constituents are concerned, like you said, they all understand about the part that rates are going, I mean, the assessment went up. But it is still kind of confusing to some about their, they filled out the high mileage things, but it's kind of not easy to see, or maybe, maybe it didn't get taken out on there, so I don't know how it was supposed to be showed up. So that might be something we might want to look at, I don't know if it's all inclusive of the rate just changes, or it's kind of a lesser thing for high mileage. If they filled out the forms, because they said they got them in on time, but I didn't know if there was some kind of notification on the statement that said, oh, this is what you got for your high mileage, that was the only question I had for that particular thing.
I've never seen any in their case.
Yeah, I hadn't either, so I didn't know how it was done, because like I said, since this was such a weird year, the numbers were all over the place. So like you said, it's kind of was the same as last year, but they didn't have high mileage last year, and now they do, so. But it was still the same rate, that is all probably, like you said, because we reduced the rate of dollars. uh, but it was still the same rate. That is all probably, like you said, because we reduced the rate a dollar, so it's kind of hard to tell if it, it showed up or not. So I, I'll ask him to call the commissioner directly. Thanks.
I'm not sure, Mr. Greenwood, the commissioner's not here. We have uh the treasurer with us tonight, but it's, it's not necessarily her uh job to do that part of the assessment, so.
Right.
Okay, so. Gotcha.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear any of that. Could you repeat it, Travis?
Sure. So what Ms. Carlton just said is that i- if they qualify for the high mileage discount, it, it's not broken out on the bill. It would just reflect in the lowered assessment of the vehicle itself. So if they're concerned that they did not get that, or if they just want clarification that they did, they need to call the commissioner's office and have her. I'd like to see.
I just said, thank you. Thanks.
I'd, I'd like to say that if someone truly thinks that they're being taxed on a vehicle that they don't own anymore, some say three years, that is correctable. And that does not lie on the hands of the, of the board supervisors. We were presented with, with J.D. Powers uh numbers, and we as a board adjusted the rate. And according to what was supplied to us by the commissioner revenue, we, so far as the reductions go, we're in the top ten percentile in the state of Virginia.
Well, Ms. Monkhauser shared an article with us this week, uh, the county, I think it was about a time that, that just, just reacted.
Yeah, in some, in some counties, the city of Petersburg, they did absolutely nothing, and they said they needed the funding. And it's other counties that have done absolutely nothing.
We were very proactive compared to others.
Is it any way that, that this can be made available on the King William County site?
Sure. That there's no objection to have that posted tomorrow on this branch, the uh spreadsheet with all the counties.
Sounds good.
And I would suggest those that listening, there is a Wall Street Journal article, it's, it's very, very recent, but it's a, a really good article explaining why some of the values went up, some went down. It's called Why Your Car Might Be Worth More Today Than When You Bought It. Wall Street Journal, if you Google that, it should pop right up. Thank you, Mr. Hudgens.
Thank you.
Ms. Grover, yeah. Ms. Grover will cover the changes to the historic, I'm sorry, I'm gonna screw that up, historical preservation review board. Architectural Review Board, sorry.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I also have Mr. Fisher with me, who's the president of the Historic Preservation and Architectural Review Board. And the board has for quite some time and been working towards a goal to um obtain their certified local government status. So back in August, we were able to submit and actually to the um state historic preservation office, our application. And, and so we were formally under review at that time. Um, we submitted a entire checklist um of all of the requirements. And, and back in September, that review came back to the county. And one of the requirements at that time was for the board to actually modify our bylaw. And so what you have as part of the packet are the amendments to the bylaws. And so articles um ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen are additions to the bylaw. Um, and then some minor um amendments to the existing um bylaw. So there are several, um, if you aren't familiar, there are several um items that benefit the um historic board um to obtain the certified local government status, and that is that it gives us a working relationship with the state historic preservation office. It gives us a formal role and the identification, um, evaluation and protection of our community's historic resources. It allows the board to review the national register nominations for properties that go into uh the Department of Historic Resources, and then it gives us technical assistance from the Department of Historic Resources and the National Park Service. And it also makes us eligible to apply for matching grants from a ten percent share of the Virginia's annual federal appropriation, which is set aside specifically for certified local government. So it's very important for us when they come back and they say we have to meet these requirements that we meet um what they send us back. So this is one of the steps that they sent us back was to modify the bylaws. And so we've come before the board because we found that since twenty-twelve, um, the bylaws were actually amended by the board supervisors. Um, so the board itself has never been granted the ability to amend their own bylaw. So as part of the amendments to the bylaws, um, we have put in there that the board be allowed to amend their own bylaws going forward. And so we request a motion to be able to amend um the bylaws for, for the historic board. So I'll stand by for any questions along with Mr. Fisher.
Is there any negative or positive for changing this?
It, it's right in line with all of our other boards, the planning commission, um, the board of joining appeals, so we took pieces from each one of those boards. And so the benefit to the board itself being able to amend their own bylaws is if the um state historic preservation office comes back and says that we need to modify anything else, that they'd be able to do it themselves. Um, and January of each year, any of our other boards, like the planning commission, um, they're able to take a look at it and then their own.
We, let's call it a complimentary copy when that does take place.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay. I think that's, if it can be somehow incorporated.
Yes, sir.
Maybe not here tonight, but at least us aware, keep the board aware of what's going on.
Yes, sir.
Think we can help or in any way. Mr. Greenwood?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to verify, has this been uh checked over with the county attorney, just in case? I know, like I said, there's certain things that maybe certain boards can and can't do. Has he been asked if, if this is one of the things that they can do? Maybe that might be one reason it's never been done before. I don't know.
Yeah, we've not sent it through the county attorney.
We haven't sent it specifically to him, but it looked this agenda over and did not have an issue with it.
Okay, that's fine. Just thought I'd ask, because sometimes there is, sometimes there isn't.
Worth it, because he did have an issue with another, right?
Right, exactly.
That was a good question. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Anything else, uh, Mr. Fisher, Ms. Grover?
Uh, the only thing I would add is um the, the comments that we got back from the state uh weren't, weren't a lot. And uh, so I'm very optimistic, uh, but you have to also realize this is a multi-step process. This next goes to the federal level and so forth. So it's going to be a little bit of time before we find, find the, the final answer. But I think the fact that there were very few questions asked of us, it looks pretty good that we'll probably move through the rest of the process over the next couple of months.
All right, gentlemen, action tonight is a motion to approve these bylaws.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion made, properly second, Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Hi. Thank you. Sheriff Walton is up next to revisions to academy charter and bylaws.
Good evening again, gentlemen. So you, I think you have before you a, a letter from the uh Rapid Regional Criminal Justice Academy Director, Executive Director, Michael Harvey, about the updating of the charter and bylaws of that uh agency, uh, which I am a board member of. To give you a little bit of history, uh, King William has been a part of this academy since nineteen seventy-eight, its beginnings. Uh, we have, we are one of the twenty charter members of that organization. And that has what in the last year or two has caused a little bit of strife amongst the academy members. So the academy is set up as charter members, the first twenty, and then training members, anyone who came in after that uh who participates. We all pay the same dues, and we all get the same benefits of the academy. The, the problem arose in the last year or two uh that the charter members really make the financial decisions of the academy. They're, they're the ones by their original charter, they were set up to be the ones who, who did the voting. And then once that's done, it's taken before the general membership for kind of a uh blessing, if you will. Uh, so we went to, you know, after, after last year's board, a full board meeting, uh, we were charged with revising the charter, revising the bylaws to reflect more of what we do today. So the changes in there, as Mr. Harvey describes, I guess the real change is, is that every member has the same vote now. There will be no difference whether you're a charter member or you're a training member, you all carry the same weight. Uh, so, and as the years have gone by, you know, we've, we've started out with more than just the sheriffs and chiefs of police. You know, we have college campus police departments on there. We have uh communication centers, we have uh regional jails. We have all these, they're participants of the, of the academy. So all of these folks now will have a seat at the table for voting. Uh, and, and the way that they're setting it up here uh is that the sheriffs will decide which sheriff serves on the board of the executive board, and the chiefs of police will decide which chiefs of police and on down the line, each, each agency type will select their own representative. Now, all of us are representatives of Allen County. Uh, and for many years, you know, we're very conservative at the academy, and in my opinion, we, we, you know, we run a very tight budget. Uh, we don't do any, and there's not a lot of thrills onto what we do about, we provide what the state says for us. The problem is coming the last couple of years is that, no surprise to you, I'm sure, uh, the state has started reducing the amount of funding that goes to the academy. Uh, and in doing so, of course, the burden comes back on to the localities. Last year, it was year four last, we, we had to increase the, the rate of how much we pay per officer uh to participate, but we, you know, we had to cover the cost. Uh, and I know uh you have a, a letter, I think, uh, the county administrator from King Queen may have sent uh addressing concerns about that, not having to say about uh capital expenditures or, or the J, oh, excuse me, not jail, or the regional academy going into debt or creating debt service. Well, you're allowed by code of Virginia to do that. It's in the code that, that the regional academy can do that with the voting, two-thirds, I'm sure, vote or majority vote, in which is what all that is spelled out in the charter and the bylaws. That's the way it's been. I mean, it's always been that way. For forty years, we've operated that. We, we have built, when we first started going up there, this is days before my time, uh, they used an old schoolhouse, a school building, uh, that Fredericksburg had abandoned. And then in the early eighties, now, I guess it's late eighties, uh, we purchased a piece of property outside of the city of Fredericksburg itself and, and built a training facility there. It was just one building. As time went on, you know, numbers grew, uh, we had to add on to that. Each time we did that, we had to go out and of course accrue, accrue some debt to do that and, and doing that, but we've been very uh good stewards of the counties, or I think of each county's money uh to pay for that. We will pay off the last uh amount that we owe now next year. So we won't have any more current debt. There's always going to be things in the future that, that is going to need to be, be done. We have a training track up there for uh driver training. Uh, the, the, we had to, for some point, we had to get a, a borrow of money to build that and to make that happen, but every now and then you've got to go back in there, redo the track, you know, meet the, the um, the specifications that are required. Uh, and at some point in time, I'm sure down the road as time goes on, there'll be other needs that the academy may have to do. You know, as you all know, just maintaining the building itself or the buildings, uh, the H P A C and all that stuff is very expensive stuff to maintain. That's part of a capital budget that we, that we at the academy have, and we maintain, and then again, uh, we, we have not, this year, uh, the academy has not presented any raise in the dues, and we don't, or what I was told, we don't see any in the very near future. So we're going to hold the line on the dues, and I think that may have been a concern. But all that, and I give you all that history just to tell you that uh we've, we've been really good at working with this academy for forty years, and we've been a part of it. The changes that are made really don't change anything as far as how the, the academy uh gets funding or accrues debt. All that's about basically the same as it has been for the last forty years. So I, I'm asking that you approve the bylaws and the charter uh so that we can present that at the December six full board meeting of the academy for final adoption.
Is in any other counties that, that have uh expressed concern?
Not to my knowledge, and I've talked to the academy director today, and he was not aware of any uh concerns.
Where is Andrew at on this now?
Had been in discussion with the county, new county attorney, county administrator for King and Queen, and they kind of had the same opinion that they wanted to look at it further. Um, they were concerned, like you mentioned, of potentially uh being obligated to make capital expenditures that maybe we didn't want to make.
What did you think of?
You know, my argument to that is, is, is no different from the arrangement we have with the regional uh town itself. To s, to same, or great, or arrangement that we have.
How's your lobbyist down in Richmond? How's, how's your lobbyist down in Richmond?
Oh, very good, actually.
Sounds like a new project. I'm sure he beats him to death.
Well, yeah, but this doesn't really have anything to do with, with the General Assembly Act. I mean, because it's already spelled out in, in the code of Virginia that allows the academies to do this. Oh.
Maybe consider a supplement, but uh, Mr. Hudgens, the action is the same as the other one is.
We had, we had intended that it uh, a resolution adopting this would be considered on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
If, if you have any question, you can certainly call me. Uh, I can arrange a meeting with the academy director if, if need be. Uh, but uh, you know, hopefully we can, we can get this at your next meeting.
Gentlemen, on page uh forty-five is the document. Mr. Greenwood, I don't, I think the sheriff brought this in late this evening. Do you have that uh in your, in your information? Should be page forty-five or forty-five.
I don't think I do.
Might have been something.
Yeah, it looks like a jump from forty-three to forty-seven.
So is Andrew in conflict with us?
It seems he is for some reason.
He's, like I said, when I saw his email on Friday, it was, it was that he agreed with Miss C and King and Queen that maybe we should look at changing some wording or something to better protect the county. I also think it's very similar to a lot of the other regional agreements. It's good when we have somebody on the board that focuses.
Well, in, in reality, uh, we're, we're now one of forty-two other agents that, oh. If we don't go, if we don't agree to this, we're no longer part of the academy, then where are you going to send me? Where, where am I going to send my folks to get trained? Crater is the next closest one, could go to Tidewater, which is down in Hampton. Uh, I, I, you know, I, I don't see that this, this is a huge concern. Uh, we've been operating this right again for, for so many years, uh, but, you know.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree with you. He, he grew up a red flag, and I was just, I was just wondering why.
Well, I think the red flag was sent up from King and Queen, and then he's, uh, you know, he wants to take a close look at us soon. I haven't talked to him, he hasn't talked to me about it. I don't, I guess.
On Friday, and I was going to look into it more.
Yeah.
Did you, did you see his email?
Did I see his email? I, I just, I didn't see where he made any comments other than it was just forwarded. Oh, I.
Okay.
Okay.
And yeah, I don't think, Sheriff, you just came back at it again.
Well, it, well, that's true, that, there's, there's a stipulation that, that to pull out of the academy, you have to give uh two years' notice.
Two or three.
Uh, two or three, I believe it's two, I might be wrong, I'd have to read through it, but whatever, you have to give a notice of. Uh, in order to be a tent to pull out, and then you have to be voted on by the, the academy to leave. Uh, so I don't, I don't know how, how this all works, this is more legal stuff, I guess, that Mr. Roberts would have to figure out, but. Um, it, it, it's not, it's not gonna be as easy to pull out of the academy, and I would never advocate to pull out of this academy, I, I think they'd be a wonderful job. Training, we send a lot of folks up there every year, I have several of my staff members that, uh, go up there and teach at the academy. Uh, myself included, uh, so it's, it just makes it. Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think anybody is saying that, I, I think we're all concerned that, uh. Andrew, uh, responded the way that he did with that email from. King and Queen. I'm, I'm certainly not an attorney.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm kinda at a loss of that, cause I don't know what you're referring to, but, uh, I didn't see that. I just know that was a concern from King and Queen.
And, and that's to do with a state code, right? That's what I get, I think, and I don't, I don't know how Andrew's gonna change state.
Does he recommend a deferral or simply authorize approval of the documents?
Well, currently this discussed in LGA, so. Um, I guess there's a broader discussion going on, I, I'll say this. Um, you know, un- unless something comes up in the next two weeks that is, uh. You know, compelling me to say that this is a, a, an idea that we need to reconsider, um, I, I would. I don't find that issue, so I'm fine with this. You know, moving forward with this, see, it seems that the chief aim of this document is to, again, democratize the board a little bit more than it has been. Um, and, and the changes that people are finding issue with are not, are not changes at all, but rather just words that they had not seen on paper before.
Okay, everyone agreed? Mr. Greenwood, you got all that?
So is this the same document that's been carried forward since nineteen seventy eight?
It was revised in two thousand and two to its current form, uh, before, before this last provision. But there was no change in the charter versus trading members at that time, because it wasn't an issue, no one thought that was a concern. You know, I have long thought myself, why in the world do we have, some people are able to vote for one thing and others aren't, I never understood that. That's just the way that the original charter was written, and no one's challenged it until last year, uh, there were several. Agencies that thought it was a bad idea, and they were right, I was part of the, uh, the committee that drafted this new bylaws. And charter, and we all agreed, it was, it was bad, it needed to be changed.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I see the email that came out on Friday, but like I said, it says none of the things in my packet match anything that y'all are talking about. I would say that if we, if it's not a pressing matter, maybe we could bring it back up, like you said, in two weeks at the regular meeting, or is there something that we really need to do tonight?
I think, well, tonight, Mr. Greenwood, we're just saying that we're, we're okay with it appearing on our agenda on the twenty eighth. Um, I think that when it comes to the twenty eighth, the pressing matter is that they want to have these documents approved and in hand for their December meeting.
I see, well, yeah, Andrew can be there, that, he says he's not gonna be here for any of the meetings in November, so I don't know, I'm not sure.
Supposedly. He said it's something else.
Ample time to get his thoughts together though, and out to us before then.
That's true.
Yeah.
And again, after the LGA, it's, it's gonna, there's gonna be more opinions being shared here in the next several days, I'm sure, so. Uh, from other county administrators in the area, so.
Yeah, I'm okay with moving forward, like I said, if he gives us more clarification, yeah, that's fine.
Good, and I'm good with.
Good, Mr. Greenwood, thank you. Press on, thanks, Sheriff. Next up, we have, uh, Ms. Graham talk about. Ordinance update for floods, FEMA floodplains.
Good evening. So we, uh, had, um, we have to, um, update our ordinance, this is required, um, from FEMA and from DCR. Uh, we sent, uh, something out to DCR and they came back with some changes. Uh, we did those changes, we sent it back to DCR, I just got it back. They had a couple of extra changes that they wanted made, um, so I've made those changes. Um, so, I'm before you tonight, um, to see if we are ready for. Public hearing for approval, um, if this gets adopted, um, then it goes back to DCR. For their final review and approval, and then it goes to FEMA for approval. Once that all takes place, um, then we can adopt the revised flood maps. Um, and they're estimating that to take place in April of twenty twenty three. So, um. We, we've done everything that we need so far, very few changes, um, under section eighty six five fifty. Uh, they added a couple of paragraphs. Under records, uh, they just wanted to add in perpetuity. Under definitions, under eighty six dash five five seven, um. They added, uh, the accessory structures, um, and down to the bottom, they added temporary structures. Land disturbing activities, uh, or permanent or temporary storage of equipment.
These are not retroactive in any way, right?
I'm sorry.
These are not retroactive in any way.
No.
Just going forward.
And, and a lot of this stuff was already in there, it's the wording that's changing, um. A substantial damage change, just a little bit, they just wanted to add some additional wording to that. Um, same thing with the maintain the records.
And the timing is good for public hearing?
Um, if y'all are good with it, was that it for the twenty eighth?
Gentlemen, any objections? Mr. Greenwood?
No, I'm okay with it, Ms. Graham, like I said, it's pretty much generic stuff that came from the flood people, so.
And it is required, um, that we do this.
Is this a lockstep or the PDC efforts? Can you hear me? Is this a lockstep with the PDC efforts?
Uh, no, this is all through, um, Department of Conservation Recreation, they do this periodically when they change our firm maps. Um, they've been working on this for about two years, we did the flood maps, um, and the flood data. In September of twenty twenty, um, they released the preliminary flood insurance rate map, June first twenty one. They had a community coordination and outreach meeting, August third of twenty twenty one. Um, and then in February of this year, the appeal period started. And, uh, the flood insurance rate map, like I said, should be effective April twenty twenty three if all goes well. Um, pretty much none of the county was affected, everything was, any changes were in the town. Town of West Point, so, and they had quite a few changes.
So here are no objections, we'll go ahead and elaborate on the public hearing, we'll knock it out on the twenty eighth.
Okay.
There you go, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Mr. Hudgens, let's back up.
Yeah, well, he's getting a lot of, a lot of the changes that you're seeing here, just semantics changes, the, the big changes happen. Kind of corresponding with the bigger waters act, which was ten years ago or so, where Congress kinda decided they were sick of paying for stuff to get flooded out. Uh, over and over and over again, so that's pretty C language in here that, that I remember being discussed at length, like the threshold for. Um, reconstruction or major flood mitigation for, uh. Renovation, like a fifty percent threshold in overall property value, that mandatory reboarding, stuff like that, those were big changes. That were made a while ago, and the PDC did get involved in that because that was a big lift to get that through, cause a lot of people were pushing back, but they, there's nothing we can do, so.
All right, Mr. Hudgens, license fee exemptions.
So this has to do with, uh, exemptions that are already in our code, um, for volunteer firefighters and EMTs, um. This was brought to my attention by the commissioner, who couldn't be here tonight, so if you do have further questions on this, uh, I will convey those. Uh, to her, but really, she just wanted to, um. Change a, a little bit the way, uh, the process worked with how those exemptions would be, uh, requested, just to make it, uh. Uh, uh, more efficient for her office as well as, um, making sure nobody got left out, um, so. The ordinance, it's on the books now, it's really up to the volunteer to make the request and get their chief to. Say yes, they're a, a member of the volunteer organization, what she is requesting is for the. She wants it more to be on the head of the chief to make a request all in total of everybody, um, by a certain time of the year.
Steve, is there, uh, it specifically says volunteers, but is this gonna be for our, I, I think the paid, the paid people should be able to have that exception too. And it's, we didn't have paid before, so is that a, a typo, or should we add that too?
It's not a typo, um, but I'm not sure if, uh. How that's been considered before, we would have to do a little more research on that.
Right, that, that would be a larger revision, Mr. Greenwood, than what we have currently, um, you know, this is the program that we set up. As a volunteer incentive, um.
So it's, it has been geared, it is, like you said, an incentive for volunteers.
And, and that, you know, I suppose it's fine if we wanna consider it, I'm sure there's, there's things that would need to be considered a little more complicated than, than just on the surface, but. For the purposes of this provision here, we're, we're focused just on volunteers, because that's what, um, brought this whole program into existence in the first place. This was volunteer incentive, and granted, volunteerism in general is not what it was when we conceived of this anyways, but, uh. You know, we would need to do a deeper dive to see if we wanted to expand that to our paid people, which is fine, I'm perfectly happy to consider it.
Only ones that would affect, if you had. Volunteer living in the county.
Mega hit.
Huh?
Mega hit.
Mega hit, yeah. Keep forgetting, sorry about that.
Yeah, that's all I was curious about, cause I know some, some West Point people are volunteers too, and some are paid, and, and all of Station One is paid, so I was like. If, if it's just for volunteers, and another thing, why are we putting it on the chief to do that? Maybe some of these volunteers don't want it, cause we, I know Travis and I, we've brought it up many times in the past, and we've always told people that they could. Apply for it, and maybe they don't want it, I mean, I don't know.
Was she having a problem with the, with the request, is that why she wanted? Chief, the chief officer to do this, is, has it been a problem in the past?
It could be the word active that's in here.
If there's. She was having a problem a little bit, uh, making sure establishing they were active or not, as well as. The way she conveyed it to me was that maybe they don't even know that this exemption exists.
You can be on the department role, but the chief would validate that, yes, you are active, and yes, you are participating and qualified.
Well, I can tell you in the town, it was offered to them, and I don't think anybody ever could, and they knew about it, so.
Well, interesting, they've been working very close with us to develop a, a low SAP program, Mangahick and, uh, I can't remember the chief's name from West Point, so.
Chief. Or unless you're talking specifically about a volunteer chief, that would be, uh.
Both, both have been participating, we're not there yet, we're close, but they are interested now. Not particularly this particular item, but just overall incentives, incentive program.
But I'm fine with this, we can simplify it, make sure maximum amount of people get it that deserve it, that's fine.
If it makes it more clear, yeah, that, that's fine, I didn't have a problem with it, I was just curious about, some didn't, but yeah, if it makes it clearer, yeah.
I, I, Stephen, I actually think it's better that. If the chief officers do that, because some of them are on the rolls and they never show up.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
All right, so public hearing and. Resolution, ordinance amendment on the twenty eighth, that's gonna be a long night.
This isn't long, then?
Yeah. Okay, easy one, Mr. Hudgens, corrections?
Right, um, so while we, we just passed the ordinance, uh, for redistricting, uh, it kinda alerted. As, as the public and us, uh, reviewed the ordinance, we realized that, uh, polling places. Within our current ordinances, well as the old ordinance, had never been updated with, uh, the actual polling locations as they stand now. So this ordinance is to update that. Get them correct as well as one, uh, error in an existing district boundary. That's a rude, should have been that's lame.
The one question that I had, we, we were notified. It was probably six months ago about, and, and we talked about, uh, access handicap, that, or access for, uh, I think. The firehouse, the third district, and I thought it was Sweet Hall, there was also something going on there. Has Brett Reed always been the, uh, how long has Brett Reed been the polling place?
It's twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
So what they were talking about, uh, I think it was Sweet Hall, wasn't it? Also was an access problem for a handicap?
It, it's probably, yeah.
I mean, also Station One was, yeah.
The gravel access.
The gravel access issue, I believe, I mean, the, the, the doors otherwise, I think are okay, but there's, there's certainly an issue with gravel there, um.
But poll workers do come out to the vehicle.
They do. The, the, the issue and the reason that Brett Reed became the polling place, it happened to VFW, was that the VFW was so, was the, on the West Point line. So you had people that lived, you know, at the far end of, of what was the Sweet Hall district, they had to drive all the way down to West Point. To vote, so we moved it to Brett Reed, uh, to try to centralize that polling station, it was the most central and most, most easily accessible from a major highway, if there was. Uh, made Route thirty.
Is there, is there a need for that polling place anymore? Cause the only reason was it before, because we had our congressional, uh, members were split, but now. Now they're the same, that was the only reason why we had two.
Yeah, the House of Delegates membership, and that, that remains true, um, that the, uh, ninety seventh and ninety eighth districts are divided. Along that boundary line between Sweet Hall and Courthouse.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Sweet Hall's in that.
Somehow I just knew you'd know that.
Well, you go to church there.
I do.
Travis knows everything.
All right, so again, the public hearing, and we'll change the ordinance on the twenty eighth. And remaining vertical, Mr. Hudgens, EDA members.
Um, so, uh, recently, uh, one of our EDA members, so right now there's nine, uh, EDA members. Uh, one of them has had to step down, uh, Ms. Tiffany Barber, uh, because she has become a county employee, and it's actually part of their bylaws. Let alone policy that, um, she could not serve on the EDA and be a county employee at the same time, and that has, uh. I guess, given an opportunity to think, if the board wishes to, uh, reduce the numbers, um, people on the EDA. Um, that now might be a good time to start doing that, rather than. Just revoking someone, um, just decide not to fill this place. And maybe the next time someone's, uh, term comes to an end, not reappoint, um, if that is the desire of the board.
Do we have any input from the EDA?
Not yet, uh, there's the meeting on Wednesday, and I wanted to discuss with you if you had any thoughts now, and then I could talk to the board.
Well, we, we got special dispensation from the General Assembly to increase the membership.
Right.
That was done in the hopes that we would activate subcommittees that could handle specialized areas. Um, you know, agriculture committee or an industry committee or something like that, uh, I don't know if those activities have been taking place, I would assume they probably haven't been.
They have not been, um, but.
That's what I just mentioned too.
Well, right, I mean, that, that, that to me is, is largely, I'd like to see what the EDA has to say about it, if they think that, you know, it may be reminded of the purpose of these extra members that we. Um, went through the trouble of getting General Assembly approval to get, uh, they might find use for them, or if not, then I suppose we can start just dispensing with some.
Well, the, it's been clarified, I think Mr. Ashcraft did clarify and confirm that the verbiage says up to nine members.
I, I know we're not obligated to have that, but.
It gives us the leeway without, we have to go back to the general.
Understood, understood, I just don't know, maybe if they were reminded of the purpose there, they might, uh.
Yeah, and we kinda did that at the last joint meeting with the planning commission, and that was a fiasco, and Mr. Ashcraft told them as much, and. Uh, they don't seem to be doing, oh, maybe I shouldn't say this in public, but we'll talk about it later, but anyway, um. And there were. And there were other reasons that Tiffany stepped down too. It wasn't just because she's become a county employee, because we have another county employee that's on a zoning commission that's not stepping down. So, and that's another thing I was questionable about the thing earlier about people taking over their own bylaws. That's probably one of the reasons why the board supervisors had some control over some of these things. So some are, some aren't. Why aren't they all standardized? I don't know. And I don't know what the correct answer is, but.
What, what other boards and commissions do not allow county employees to serve? Is the EDA the only one?
Well, I think the BZA by code, they should all be uniform one way or the other.
Well, the EDA is, I think by code, if not some other oversight, is supposed to be separate from the board. They're supposed to be legally upon their own. And there is verbiage in code when I was serving on the EDA.
If that's so, then why would we appoint anybody if, if they are separate from us?
Who would otherwise?
I, I don't know. But I do think it's probably too many members on, on the EDA. It seems like the larger the cast of characters, the more grid like that it is. You know, that's what I see.
For sure. No disagree.
Well, as Mr. Miskowski, having been the, the vice chair and the chair of the EDA, the intent was to break down into subcommittees and focus on specific areas. That's kind of fallen apart over the last couple of years and maybe they want to look in a different direction. So I suggest we support what comes out of Wednesday's meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. Ms. Branch, recreation survey results. And while she's bringing that up, are we, do we confirm that the number of participants is statistically valid? I know it's an odd question, but there are, I think we got enough survey results to, it is considered statistically valid. When we did the quick survey, had some experts look at it and they validated that, yeah, that's, that's enough. You got enough to make it a.
How many do we give it at, twelve hundred?
Yeah, it was a good, good response. Here we are, getting ready to lace and fiber. Only a year.
Well, five years.
Five years.
Five years. But hey, remember when we started, we said it was going to take, what, seven years?
Triple digit million dollars.
Years and seventeen million dollars, was what we said. So five years, fat six and two and a half million.
That's pretty good.
It's more money in it than that, but it's not.
Not, not from.
All right, no, it's going to cost more than seventeen million.
Eighteen million.
And this is just very basic preliminary results from the survey. The survey closed at midnight on November first. And I sent out and will put on the website later, the full survey results. So the first question was what, in which managerial district do you live? And of the five hundred and thirty nine responses, two hundred and sixty or forty eight percent of them were in A-Lot. The next largest was a tie between Manquinn and Sweet Hall and Courthouse.
As I see it, there's, there's one more in Sweet Hall and Courthouse and there is a Manquinn. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, eighty three.
Just clarify, just making sure that.
And, and then that, that there was twenty three people who were somewhere else in Virginia. We had another question, which was outside of Virginia and there were zero respondents from outside of Virginia. So then we asked, how many people live in your household in each of the following age groups? So as you can see, adults aged thirty five to sixty had the largest percentage. I don't know why it's showing a hundred percent, but there were four hundred respondents that lived there. And obviously there are going to be more people in your household than what answered because you're counting children and other people who didn't necessarily respond. But it's also a good way to look there as we're talking a lot about the age of, or how many kids we have in school. So we can see that we have quite a few elementary age and some kind of coming up there, hundred and thirty five younger than elementary. What, what recreation activities does your household primarily participate in? And we asked people to select up to three responses. Not everybody chose three. The largest percentage of people, well, with other entries, but the largest single one was Parks and Rec youth programs, eighteen percent. And then this next one is a kind of a breakdown of those same answers. So Parks and Rec youth programs, eighteen percent, private sports, sixteen percent. And that includes Little League Raiders cheering, gymnastics, dance, things like that. And then the third top one was walking, jogging and running. Then we asked people to rank how important the following opportunities that we currently have in the county are to them. Sixty four percent of people said the recreation park was important to them. Parks and Rec youth programs, sixty three percent and Little League fifty six percent. So the, the lowest one was the dog park with fifteen percent. And then we asked people to rate, rate their satisfaction with the current opportunities that we offer on a scale of one to five, with five being the highest. And so the average score is there, Little League got three point seven seven. They were the highest. Parks and Rec youth programs, three, seven, five, and Raiders football, three point four seven. The lowest one is private facilities where you live. And those were things like in its subdivision provided swimming pools, gym facilities, playgrounds, things like that. So the next one was how important is expanding these different opportunities to you? And the number one one with fifty three percent, the most important of the respondents was baseball, soccer and football fields. The second one was walking and hiking trails and the third tied with playgrounds and the Mattapanai River boat access and swimming. So you can see that the least important thing to people is pickleball courts. And I believe that is all I have for you. Then the last question in the survey was an open ended one. Where it just asked people to share any other thoughts or ideas or comments that they had. And there were quite a few of those. So in the information that I sent you, you've got all of them individually. There were too many to kind of pull out. And they were mixed response. Some people were very positive that they wanted to see more things happen and others were not positive. So those are the preliminary results. And like I said, I've sent you the full results. And we've also sent them to the Hill group, so they'll be doing their analysis and whatnot and be coming back with more information.
When do we expect some of that feedback from Hill group?
We've got them scheduled to come on the twelve. Given update.
Okay, thanks very much. Winding down, supervisor requests, comments, Mr. Hodges.
I really don't have any requests. I, I would like to mention on November the third, Howard J. Cook passed away. He was a special agent with State Police retired. He had also been an SR, SRO at West Point for a while and he worked as a deputy in the court seat in Uptown. He just lost his wife to COVID last year and lost a son in the road during a bad accident eleven years ago.
Mr. Miskowski?
As far as requests going forward, you know, we got what, what I've used overall, good news from all points tonight. But, you know, in, in what's going to be my last year here with you guys, I really want to see this thing across the finish line and, and I'd like to get you know, monthly updates from them, at least in writing. But once construction begins, I'd really like to get in person updates from them. You know, at least to zoom, it can count as in person, but just, just where we are, what we're passing.
I think it's contractually obligated to provide that.
They're contractually obligated to give a monthly report to us and to the HCD, which consists of those three milestones that they had. So that's not really a discussion. That's just three numbers basically.
Yeah, I mean, because we're going to start hearing things from our constituents as the build out starts, so we can start bringing, you know, compliments, comments, concerns, whatever directly to them as the build outs going, you know, going forward. I just think, I think over the next, well, I guess, not quite twelve months now at this point in time, this, this is going to be one of the most important things we're, we're ever seeing right now.
Mr. I know, I already had my term, just one statement. He did say that two ways tonight on that underground and heard it.
It's
He said it twice.
If, okay, today, today without any further burying of anything, if it's terrestrial, they will follow the terrestrial unless there's poles there. That was his unless. And it's kind of a, I guess it's a gray area. But I, I know we've talked, but Dominion has a big project, as you both alluded, to put a lot of stuff on the ground down your way. And he did say, and we'll reiterate, we'll talk with them tomorrow, we'll reiterate that we need, really need to know that they are in lockstep with them. I, I, I share your concern in a, in a way, but all they can say is that they're negotiating, they're dealing with them, they're getting updates. I don't know, we can't prove anything.
Well, right. And if some of these questions are going to be difficult to answer until they actually got boots in the ground, seeing what their situation is also. But, you know, what we need to make sure is that it's consistency also. You know, because they're going to have different, different people managing different areas of, of different parts of the build out, I'm sure too. So we need to make sure they're being consistent. We need to make sure that they're.
He did say, and I can't imagine how, working with two companies, they had a crew focused, they, they're building, they're connecting, they're hooking up, they're lighting them up, and then all of a sudden they, something happens and they got to shift. And to be able to keep that, I can't imagine having to manage that. But I'm sure they've, they've done it before. They've been very successful so far in the northern neck, so we'll see.
Right. That, that's my big thing for now at the meeting tonight is, is I, I want us to be, be very involved, at least in discussions of how that's going and be able to, to have a direct line of communication from them from now until we're, we've got the lights on.
Sure. Mr. Gerber.
Well, I'll announce with.
I'm going to do those two announcements.
I, I was going to do the, Ms. Mason. Rabies Clinic. It's going to be a rabies clinic this coming Saturday at the courthouse, new courthouse from eight thirty to eleven thirty. It will be ten dollars a shot. And that's it.
At the courthouse.
That's what she said. I haven't seen it.
That's correct.
Is. Just surprised, that's all.
And she did also say, Ms. Brown, I believe, said the commissioner's successful DMV connect program would be at the Parks and Recs building in A-Lot on the thirteenth of November. It's been very popular. So they'll do that again on the thirteenth.
And if I could also add, Bill, I'm paying in for your shot.
I think you mentioned saline last time.
You've already got rabies.
And I would like to announce one good news story today that came out today. Our own Benjamin Shoemaker was appointed to Governor Glenn Youngkin's cybersecurity planning committee. So that's a big thing. I think he had a meeting this morning, his kickoff meeting was this morning, so hopefully we'll learn. And he'll learn what he's supposed to be doing with doing this. So another King William appointee to the, to the Youngkin board, to the Youngkin administration.
Congratulations.
All right. This should go quickly. If I could get a motion to convene.
I didn't get on here.
I'm sorry, Steve. Out of sight, out of mind. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, just some of these issues again. We need to really look at the library. We just got the email a few, few minutes ago, a couple hours ago, saying they want twenty eight thousand, four hundred and eighty three more dollars next year for more raises, more merit increases, operational costs and other things. So I we need to start looking at some of these other options that we've been talking about. I mean, it's already November. It'll be next year before we know it. That's one thing. And then, like I said about the earlier thing, Ed, I wasn't really screaming when I was talking about the internet. It's just I didn't think anybody heard me because we have so much trouble with the internet. Me and Chris sat this afternoon up with this tablet and we got, it was working perfectly. We could hear each other. We did a test meeting and then when I tried to get to the real meeting, it doesn't work at all. So I'm having to use my phone. I can't see anything. But anyway, maybe we can get something on that. And what the, my, my main concern was about the internet and we could talk, me and you together with the other guy that was there earlier, is that it does seem to be mainly in my district because it's like you said, it's where all these companies are colliding, Breeze Line and mixing with Rappahannock Electric and Atlanta and the other power company. That's right where some service was and that's iffy, who's taking over. But like you said, maybe we can get it all straight, but that's a big area in there that's, people want internet and it's close to A-Lot. It's not going to, seems like it's not going to be covered. But anyway, just, that's something I want to work on. Thanks a lot. And everyone, everybody vote tomorrow. It's constitutional right. Let's do it.
Yeah, we'll try to get that clarified, Mr. Green.
Okay, thank you.
Are you going to join us in closed?
Oh, I didn't think we had one. I don't have any paperwork on it closed.
Check your, it was a, yeah, check, check.
Yeah, look, the only thing I got today was this thing from Ms. About the, because I mean, the deputy clerk sent me the link for today, but it doesn't say anything about it. But anyway, I'll check again, but I don't see anything in here, but I'll call back.
We don't have a separate Zoom.
Sure.
I can just call on.
Yeah, there, there's a, but you can just listen to the motion. I, I think that'll cover it.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I move to convene a closed meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven, eleven, eight, three of the Code of Virginia regarding real property used for a public purpose specifically pertaining to the acquisition of real property for a public purpose. Discussion in an open meeting may adversely bargain position or negotiating strategy. And in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven, eleven, eight, one of the Code of Virginia, to consider a personal matter involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commission.
Have a motion to be in a closed meeting, properly seconded, Ms. Branch.
Aye.
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 Steve, you playing drums or?
No, not me.
Hold the meeting back in session.
Mr. Chair, I move to reconvene in an open session. Second.
Motion made and seconded, Ms. Branch.
Aye.
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 Bye.
Aye. I can't hear for some reason.
I move SR one.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Ms. Branch.
Aye.
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 Hi. And I'd like to announce that we have approved. I'd like to announce that we approved one member of the board of equalization, Greenwood from the fifth district. Where anyone interested in serving, please fill out an application, get it from Ms. Branch, if possible. We'll get that moving. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made. And properly seconded, in favor, say aye.
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 Close.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Ian.